Good evening, welcome to the January 7th, 2024 Special Board Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board, please rise for the part of the Regents. Mr. Fike, could you take roll call, please? Jason Mel, present. Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Deborah Blum?
Present.
Dr. Andrea Batler?
Present.
John Fedler? Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
Timothy?
Here.
Travis Oden?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
All present. Thank you, Mr. Fike, in addition to the nine board members and tenants this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Sharon Montaigne, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Christy Haller, Superintendent, Mrs. Donovan Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Spunavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Fack, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. Okay, next, there are no amendments to tonight's agenda, and there are no public comments unless somebody would like to come up and speak. I would like to just acknowledge that we do have on the new Chair and Vice Chair of the Exeter Township Supervisors here in attendance tonight, Mohammed Mohammed and Jack Pyho, so thank you for attending, we appreciate your support, and looking forward to working with you guys in the new year. Moving on to committees personnel with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. I'm gonna separate F, if that's okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the matter as the former process for retirement. Chairman Turner, fifth grade teacher at Reifton, retiring effective the end of the 24-25 school year with 25 years of service, appointments, change of status, additional assignments, and leave of absence. Second?
Favor of a motion and a second, any discussion? Who has in favor say? Opposed? I just have it motion case.
I'm sorry, let me try that again. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached list of course requirements. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I will be abstaining from this because my status is listed in the list of course requests. Any other discussion? Who has in favor say?
Ah.
Opposed? And I abstained, motion case.
That's everything, Mr. Mel.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Comments or non-agenda items, still no one signed up? Unless there are any objections, we'll adjourn the special voting meeting. The special voting meeting is adjourned. And we're gonna go right over to the January 7th Committee of the Home Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Mr. Fike, could you take roll call again, please? Jason Mel? I'm still here. Julia Schaefer?
Still here.
Deborah Blum?
Still here.
Dr. Andrea Batler?
Here.
John Fedler?
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Travis Oden? Allison Wilson?
Here.
As for it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fike. The meeting minutes are attached, does anyone have any changes with the special of the late term of the voting meeting minutes for the December 4th, 2024 Special Voting Meeting? And the Committee of the Home Meeting, or the December 17th, 2024 Board Voting Meeting? Hearing none, we're gonna move on, we are not amending anything to the agenda tonight, and again, no one has signed up for private comments, non-agenda items unless someone would like to come up and speak. So none, and we're forward to committees, education with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we can be starting on the education panel tonight with a list of staff conferences. Are there any questions about staff conferences? And then also?
To committees, education with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, we can be starting on the education panel tonight.
Just give us one second, somebody having some sound difficulties here.
Okay. We're gonna have a report on field trips that are within the 60-mile radius, and then we will vote on field trips that will be outside of the 60-mile radius. Any questions or concerns about field trips? Okay, then we will have a first look at the 2025-2026 district calendar, it's attached here. Dr. Haller, would you like to say anything about that calendar? So, we took a wise look at the calendar, it is very close, very similar to what we've done in the past, we looked at removing some of our half-days with the intent of making them for professional or development days. Some people may be aware in the community that the state has changed the regulations for this school year, so it's either 180 days and/or 900 or 990 hours. So for elementary, it's 900 hours, for secondary, it's 990 hours, or you can do 180 days. This past year, we did 180 days and we were well over...
Because different teachers have a different requirement for the number of days that teachers work, and our district is 189 days, that's how many days that they're contracted to work. In addition to that, the state has a wide number, or a large number, of required trainings that our staff have to do every single year. So, some people in the community might say, "Well, why don't you front-load them or put them all at the end of the year?" That wouldn't make sense to do that because the trainings are to the benefit of students, and so we need to be doing trainings throughout the course of the year. We also use that time to look at student data, which is coming in at various points of the year, and then have time for our teachers to collaborate. I'll say that, you know, I'm a parent in the community too, I have two kids who have already graduated, I've been a community member here for close to 30 years, this is my 22nd calendar as a parent that I've gone through, and obviously a number as an administrator here. I know the difficulty of managing childcare as a working parent, because I've always been one, there is never a perfect calendar, but we are creating a calendar that is best meeting the needs of our students, for looking at student data, meeting training requirements, and of course complying with the teacher's contract. So, those are all things that we look at, and this year you'll notice that the one departure that we did, again, made, was, in addition to the taking away some of the half-days, is we went down to 179 student, we're down to 179 student days. So that is all listed on the calendar, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say, you know, it's the administration's job to put out a calendar that meets the state requirements, and also that they feel meet the academic needs of our students, and then it's our role as board members to make sure that it meets those goals as well, and also that it's meeting the community's needs as well. It is not our job to pick apart the calendar or to change around days, if we believe it doesn't best meet the needs of our students, then I think what we need to do is we put it back to the administration, maybe with a recommendation, we feel this doesn't work, or this doesn't work for our community. So right now, looking at the calendar, I do believe that this is put forth the best calendar to meet the academic needs of our students, and it's also very consistent with calendars that we've had in the past that have seemed to meet the community's needs. I know, as you've mentioned, there's always the concern about half-days, and that unfortunately just with the way that it, teachers meet to go over data, it really is something that it needs to happen, so, you know, I do think that this calendar meets our needs, so, thank you.
Any other discussion on the calendar? Can hear a pin drop right now. All right. Dr. Haller, did you have anything else you wanted to discuss on the calendar?
No, like I said, I appreciate your comments, Allison, you know, as, again, it's, every calendar is not gonna meet every single family's needs in this community, but if people do want to send, take an educational trip, they're welcome to do that, we have forums, and, you know, we're always happy to hear suggestions, but again, there's certain things that some districts can do that perhaps we can't do because we, our contract looks different, so.
All right, and then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the senior high school soaring eagle. You can see that the attachments are there with the changes.
So, as a reminder, every year we bring to the board an update to the soaring eagle, which is our program of studies of the high school, this is the vehicle which starts the process for course selection, and each year, the high school administration, along with the Teaching and Learning Office and Special Education Office come together to take a look at current courses, if there's potentially any new courses or courses that we're not offering. So each year we present to the board any of those updated and changes, so that you're aware of what will be offered in the future for the district. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Tom Campbell, our high school principal, and Dr. Joe Alcaro, who's gonna talk about some of our AP opportunities that will be new for the district as well.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, everybody. In addition to what Dr. Hoyt's explanation was, I would add that this is a process that we start in December, and the departments each take a look at what's in that document and parse through that themselves, then we take a look at that at other levels, but you can see the one-page summary, the things that are not noted and we're not highlighting here are changes that we just make to directory information, typographical errors, just some clarity of language, but no substantive changes. The substantive changes are listed below, and I'm gonna let Dr. Alcaro start with some of the AP information.
Hello, everybody. So this year, we had an opportunity to expand our program of studies, our soaring eagle, for some additional opportunities for our AP courses. We looked at what we were offering, what other districts in the county were offering, to kinda compare and see if there were some ways for us to expand some additional, you know, rigorous courses of study for those students who are looking for that additional challenge. One of the nice things about our soaring eagle, which I think is really impressive, is not only do we offer supports and interventions for students who may need additional assistance, but we also have a lot of courses in there, and along with some additions here this evening for upper-level and high-achieving students. So, the first one you'll see on there is AP Seminar. AP Seminar is a course that although we are putting in the English department, is not really an English course in the sense that it is a, it's more of an elective course, it's one of the two capstone courses from College Board, the other one is AP Research. We are not suggesting the addition of that at this time, however, a lot of schools that have AP Seminar also have AP Research. These are courses that are very cross-curricular, so you can have students that are in there that have interests that are scientific, mathematical, they could be many different aspects of whatever they're looking into, and really the entire course is based on research, analyzing data, analyzing different arguments, and kind of coming up with their own decisions, both individually and in teams. So, in, you know, in a world where we're always talking about where are we getting sources of information from, and kind of how do we dissect and digest that information, this is really a great place for students that have that interest to kinda start, and so that'll be offered for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. The other one that you'll see on here is AP Environmental Science. We already offer environmental science, we have nearly 100 students this year taking environmental science at the high school, which is a lot of students. As you can imagine, in those classes, there are students who want to have a deeper and richer, advanced experience, and so all we're doing here is offering that. So what we're gonna be doing next year is just looking at those sections and then just offering up an advanced option for those students. So, you'll have two levels of environmental science, which is a non-math-based elective in the Science Department at an advanced level, which is really nice for students who don't wanna take AP Physics or AP Chemistry, which are mathematically based, which can be challenging for some students if you don't have that Algebra II, trigonometry, or pre-calc backgrounds, but you're still looking for an advanced science course. So if anybody has any questions about those courses specifically, I will be happy to answer them. All right, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Campbell for the rest of this.
Thank you. Just wanted to highlight a couple of the other things that are listed on there. The Core Connections is a course that we've been looking at for a while, and as we have developed a little more articulation and review of some of the resources in our math sequence, we've decided that that's not necessary, and we can provide the supports for those students through the Algebra I course. Earth Science has been part of a ongoing review of how do we make sure that students are most prepared for the 9 to 12 curriculum, in particular being ready for that Biology Keystone in 10th grade. So, science teachers had some really good ideas as they had been working through the revision of the STEEL standards, that some of that same thinking should be starting in 9th grade, so we're gonna look at how do we incorporate some of the skills that show up in 10th grade biology, but in a different content area can be applied. So not a change of the course so much as a change of emphasis. Bands, we are separating extracurricular aspects of that from the curricular ones, hoping to expand the opportunities for students within the school day. And the last one there is Orientation to Teaching, which is an opportunity that was brought to us through Immaculata, it's a dual enrollment course, and it's part of a three-course series that they have, which is intended to expand the pipeline of teachers, or potential teachers. We think it has a great opportunity, and we certainly need more students taking, considering education as a future career. What we have already is a pretty robust internship program, and a lot of our students are educational interns in our own schools. So Mark Ricketts runs that, you've heard about how well that's been going, and we're gonna be layering that opportunity into this. Mark had already been doing some thinking about how does I, how do I make that educational intern program a little more robust, giving some more instruction about classroom management, basic pedagogy, and this course does some of that. So, we're hoping that it provides what Mark was already thinking about, along with a dual enrollment opportunity. There's some logistical challenges with it, but we're gonna offer it and see what sort of interest there is from students, and then figure out how we can overcome the logistical barriers. Any questions about any of those changes for next year's soaring eagle?
Mr. Campbell, I actually thought of an AP question that I had for Mr. Alcaro. It's awesome that we are expanding our AP curriculum, just curious, you know, we've talked a little bit in the past about testing for the AP, whether it's dual enrollment or, you know, taking the AP test. What are we seeing as far as the data, is our test scores improving? Is there a program where we're helping to prepare students for testing on these AP tests? I know the way that our, I believe it's the same way, the way our curriculum's split, if you take a course in the first semester, you may not test on that until the end of the year, so just curious to know what we're doing to make sure our students are prepared for those tests.
Well, there's a couple of things we're doing. First of all, the data is actually trending in a positive way. Last year, we had our highest percentage of students receive a 3 or higher in the last five years in, on our AP tests. So, we are seeing a lot of success in our AP classrooms, that's attributed to the instructional practices by our teachers. We have more and more teachers that are becoming AP readers as well, that's for them going and actually grading the tests, so that they bring that knowledge back to the classroom, that's something that I know Mr. Campbell supports, I support, the Teaching and Learning Department, the administration supports, which is awesome. We also, this year, have expanded the use of a program called Albert I.O. Albert I.O. is an online tutorial, but it's also something that can be used in the classroom for classroom practices inside of certain AP courses, which helps. We've brought in, we had a couple mini PD sessions for that, even for students that are in the fall semester and in the spring semester. We always offer up study sessions in the spring for our fall and our spring semester APs. Of course, those are much more important for those who take it as like a fall block than for those that take it as a spring block. I know Mr. Campbell's very supportive of that, and he allows for teachers to get subs those days, and allows for the students to go and usually take part in like the LGI or somewhere else in the high school. When I was up there as an assistant principal, I helped to organize that as well. So, we do a lot to support our students, and I think because of that, we are seeing a lot of success from those students.
And are students that are dual enrolled, are they, are we seeing an increase of them continuing to take the test even if they don't have to?
Even though they don't have to, we always recommend it, and there's a couple reasons why, it depends, obviously. I met with all AP and dual enrollment students in the fall, so any student that was enrolled this year in an AP or a dual enrollment course, I actually met with them during an assembly, got them all together in the fall, and explained kind of the AP process, the dual enrollment process, and we talked about kind of the reasons why you want to either do the dual enrollment via RAC, and now we'll have this opportunity hopefully with Immaculata, or also sign up for and register with the AP exam. We have not seen a dip in our AP exam participation rates, in fact, we've seen an increase the last few years, looking at how many students are taking our tests, and once again, I think that's a credit to the teachers in the classroom, really explaining to them the benefits of why they should take those exams. It's not just a GPA bump, it is also kind of finishing that course, right? It's to get to the end and make sure that they, you know, have actually said, "Hey, I got to the finish line, I made it there."
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, you'd commented about the fall and spring classes, we looked into that a couple of years ago because I thought that's a significant question. There are benefits and disadvantages of both, whether you're in the fall versus the spring, just in terms of time and recency, but what's interesting is that there's no difference in the test scores. It surprised me a little bit, but there wasn't, I asked around to the other schools in the county that have semester courses, they had the same, so I guess the pros outweigh the cons, but the only, only one organization knows whether there's a broader pattern there, and that's the College Board, so if you can get that information out of them, I appreciate that.
Well, I do appreciate, though, that we're offering our fall students an opportunity to come back and go and enter in a study session, right? Because we don't want them to have that slide and then, you know, not do as well on the test because of the distance and time, so appreciate you guys putting that program together.
Mr. Campbell, I have one quick question for you. I know we don't really require personal finance or life 101 as part of our elective, is there any discussion or talk about offering those or making them a requirement like we do for the personal finance and stuff? And health and gym?
Yeah, so we do need to implement personal finance requirement starting '26, '27, or at least have a plan, excuse me, a plan in place at that point. So we have started some discussion about what's the best way to accomplish that, given the still almost clear requirements that the state has coalesced around. So given that that has come into focus, I think we can start to get a little more serious about that. We'll need to do that over the first half of next year, so that we are, have everything in line for '26, '27, whether or not that course needs to start that year, but we have to have the plan in place.
And is that something you're working with Deva Par as part of?
It has, it was part of the conversations that, through that process, there was no conclusions that came from that at this point.
Thank you.
So I just wanna take one minute here to applaud the work of that team. When we do the data presentation in two weeks, one of the parts of PA Future Ready Index is about, is around students being enrolled in what's considered a rigorous course of study, and that was a target area that as a district we also wanted to try to improve. So we've really, really targeted those, the AP classes, our dual enrollment classes, and making sure that those things are being accounted for as a district, because we did not feel that the previous Future Ready Index was truly representative of what our data was telling us, so.
Okay. Now, next we have on our agenda, we will vote on a settlement agreement. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Fedler.
Wanted to congratulate Joe and Tom. I counted nine references to critical reading, critical thinking, and critical analysis, and I think if there's one thing we can send all of our students out into the world with, it's the ability to think, read, and analyze critically. That's whether they go into the military, or start a business, or trade school, take a gap year, or go to college, that's a skill that is essential, and I think that the nine or 10 times that I saw it really encouraged me, so I just wanted to congratulate Joe and Tom on emphasizing that in so many of our courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Okay. Are there any questions about the settlement agreement? Okay, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. We'll move to Finance and Audit Committee with Mr. Morgan. Oh, and I'm sorry, before we do that, the items to, that are actually going to the voting agenda are just gonna be?
So we will move forward with the conference requests, A, the field trips, B, and C. We'll move forward with the district calendar, D, the senior high soaring eagle, E, and then the settlement agreement, F.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mr. Morgan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You sure?
Nope, I will skip you then.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. First up tonight for the Finance and Audit Committee is the Berks County Cybersecurity Service Consortium Agreement. Just to read the motion, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approve an agreement with the Berks County Cybersecurity Services Consortium. The total cost is $17,250. This year's cost is prorated at $57.50, and the cost for the '25-'26 school year will be $11,500, and this is a budgeted item, and is it Mr. Way that's gonna speak to us about this, or you?
I guess Joe can speak about it.
Okay. Sheldon?
Sheldon, okay.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Sure, so this agreement is, it's gonna provide our staff with some training to get some certification.
So this agreement is, it's going to provide our staff with some training to get some certifications in cybersecurity, as well as some pen testing ability. I believe it's quarterly pen testing through a service through the Berks County Consortium. So it's just something to kind of get better visibility into any potential vulnerabilities that we may have, as well as train our staff in how to deal with them.
Is this new?
It is new, yes.
And it says that it's a consortium. How many of our districts in the county are, are part of the consortium? Do we know?
I believe it was 12.
12 of the 17?
12 of the 21, including the BCTCs.
Okay.
So it's...
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I do want to just comment and say, I, I think this is great, what the IT department is doing. I think it's very important to get these certifications, as well as kind of shore up the cybersecurity of the district. We've been seeing a number of stories, and, and more recently, in the past year or two, where, you know, have unfortunate ransomware attacks on districts that just cripple them and, you know, that actually have to close down school. It, it, it's gotten to a point where it's so bad in some of those instances. So just kudos to, to you and your team.
Thank you.
All right, similarly, moving on to B, cybersecurity agreement. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves a cybersecurity platform to enhance the protection of networks, devices, and data. The total cost of the product is $28,683. This year's cost is prorated at 95.61. The cost for the '25, '26 school year will be $19,122, and the cybersecurity platform is a budgeted item.
And again, Sheldon, if you have some information?
Sure. So again, the idea of this is that we're just strengthening our defenses, getting in place a product and service that has better capabilities than we currently have. This service is being offered through the PA IU net, so we are getting the benefits of, I would say, a greatly discounted rate on these products. Through that, we also get some onboarding and training to get the service set up with the Capital Area IU, I guess, is, is heading that up. So that's a big benefit because that's another usually substantial cost in signing on for some of these products. So again, this is just, just a way to kind of strengthen our defenses and help make sure that we can keep our network safe.
And moving forward, are we, can we assume that these will be one-year contracts? That, you know, this is a one-year, so we'll, we'll be renewing this every year?
It will be. It is more than, they are multi-year contract. I believe it...
I think they're three-year, three-year contracts.
Yeah, they're three-year contracts, I believe. The, the, the product, the cybersecurity product, I believe, is entering its final year of the contract, so we would be renewing again after that. So that would be after the following year.
And just curious, because I know nothing about this stuff, as it seems like technology changes faster than we can keep up with. How do we know that a three-year contract, that during that three-year time, that the data, that the program we're using isn't old programming, and that we should have some kind of a newer program where we would consider a year-long contract?
Right. There's no guarantees, obviously, but, I mean, they are a leader in the market. They're a direct competitor with other companies such as Microsoft, CrowdStrike, those sort of companies. So they are very much leading the way with the, the type of advanced threat detection that they're doing. So I feel pretty confident in, in saying that they're not going to fall off in three years. They've also been doing it for a while. So I am more than comfortable with a three-year contract with it.
Sheldon, but they're constantly updating, like a...
Oh, the product constantly, the product is constantly updating, and it's one of their selling points is that, you know, they're, they are dealing with the threats as they happen. That's one of their strengths in, in dealing with zero day, which means like the day that things come out, that they're, they're dealing with that. Yes, I'm sure they absolutely are going to keep on top of everything as well.
Yeah, I, I would say, I think the, one of the bad things that we've seen in, in, you know, probably the last year, I think it was, was CrowdStrike. One of their competitors pushed out a bad piece of, or bad update that ended up crippling tons of machines across the nation, and so that, that's probably the, I would say, maybe a, a big risk when it comes to software and...
It is, it is a risk, and it's a risk that they all have dealt with. Microsoft has done it as well. Various antiviruses over the years have done it. Symantec has done it back in the day, where they pushed out a bad update, that they marked a critical Windows OS file as malware, and it destroys all the machines. So, I mean, that will be a threat with any of these.
Do we receive any type of discounts for having these services through our insurance?
That's an interesting question. We'll have to talk to our insurance company, but most likely, the fact that we're doing penetration testing will be something. So that's the consortium with Berks County IU. So by doing penetration testing, that will basically be the test to make sure that the other things that we have in place are working. So we'll be doing this penetration test multiple times throughout the year. But the product that we're putting in place now is basically the advanced detection so we can see what's happening, so we can set up some rules. Back to one of the earlier questions about longevity of these products. So one of the things that Sheldon and I do very frequently is we do evaluate the effectiveness of the products that we're using. So, you know, the last product we used was Webroot. Before that, we used another product that was similar. And as the threats evolve and change, the products need to evolve and change. So eight districts in the county are using one of the competitive products. I'm talking to the IU today, many of them will be switching over because this is a very competitive quote that, that this organization gave us. So it's, it's, it's sort of a game. It's sort of like, what features do you have, and how much are you willing to pay? Talking about CrowdStrike, flying through, going through an airport the day of CrowdStrike was not a very encouraging thing.
Yeah, I'm sure that was a blast.
Yeah. Blue screens of death on all the screens in the airport was not really exciting. So we, we don't want that to happen with education and slow down or impact our, you know, what's happening in our school every day. So having this sort of advanced threat, you know, logistics that we can look at and review and see what's happening and what's trending are really important to us. And then being able to do that penetration testing is beneficial for the insurance companies. And hopefully, we would see some discount as a result of us being able to prove that we have all of the little holes plugged in, in the district, that all of our networking gear is up to date, that all of our security, all of our, our virtual private networks, all of those things are secure. And so these two things will really make us, you know, have some security, you know, in our, being able to sleep at night, knowing that we're not going to come in in the morning with blue screens of death everywhere.
Actually, every year, they give us a survey and to see what we have in place. Five years ago, it was one-page survey. Last year was, what, 10 pages? So I don't want to call it discount, but we're not being surcharged for not having things in place. Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, guys. Appreciate your, your time. All right, next, C, we have a donation from KC Towing Incorporated. Mr. Feig?
Actually, I think that was donated to our IT department. I'm not sure what the reason was.
Mr. Sheldon...
I will take anything for free.
Just when you thought when Mr. Feig's mic wasn't on...
They reached out to us. I believe they said they closed a location, that they no longer needed them. So they had reached out to our department. I spoke with them, just about them, and I said we, we could definitely use them. So they're a few years old, but still certainly good.
You're going to use them for the cybersecurity penetration testing?
We could.
Okay, there we go. Look at that. Amazing.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mel, I don't, this was just a discussion, I'm correct? We don't, this is nothing we'd be voting on, correct? Do we have to vote to accept it?
The donation, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just a, a discussion item. We do have to vote on it?
You do have to accept, yes.
Exactly. We do have to vote on it, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
I'm glad I got that right the first time. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, moving on. Okay, the number D, number D. No, I'm all messed up. Letter D. St. Lawrence Borough School Tax Reimbursement is recommended the School Board of Directors approve the request from the St. Lawrence Borough for reimbursement of the school taxes in the amount of $9,297.59. Attached is the settlement statement from where the property was purchased. Mr. Feig, you have anything to add?
I believe this is going to be their new Borough Hall.
That is correct.
So it will become tax exempt, so this is a request basically to reimburse. I'm not sure what they're doing with the existing Borough Hall. Hopefully, that'll go back on the market as a taxable property down the road.
That was my understanding, was it was, it was going to go back to, in, in the private hands, but I don't know the...
Right. But this would, this would go exempt, and we'd, you know, either wait for the courts to tell us, or we just do it directly from the request.
Any other discussion? Okay. And finally, E, the tax collector compensation. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the compensation to be paid to the Exeter tax collectors. Every four years, the governing body must set compensation to be paid to the ex, elected tax collectors. The current compensation for the Exeter Township School District is $2 per bill collected. To change the rate, a resolution must be passed prior to February 15th.
And the last time there was any type of increase was like, at least I know, was prior to eight years ago. I believe we have some tax collectors that might want to speak. I'm not sure. On their behalf.
Hi, I'm Kristi Pierceall, the Exeter Township Tax Collector. Susan was supposed to be here with us, but she had an unexpected surgery and is at home recuperating right now. So I just, Susan and I got together and just wrote a little explanation for why we were asking for the increase. So if you don't mind, I'll just read what I wrote. We are respectful, we are respectfully asking for a resolution to adjust the tax collector's compensation for the upcoming four-year term for the '26 through '29 year. The current compensation of $2 per bill has been in effect for at least eight years. We only receive the per bill fee when the resident or homeowner makes a payment. However, we are still responsible for all issued bills through end-of-year turnover. We provide phone, email, and in-person support year-round to residents, mortgage companies, and Exeter Township School District employees, even though we are not compensated for that time. We do not receive any benefits such as sick pay, vacation pay, annual increases, 401K, insurance, or any additional benefits offered to other Exeter Township School District employees. We are respectfully asking for a $1 increase, bringing our per bill compensation to $3. This is a one-time increase for the '26 through '29 term, and does include real estate, interims, and per capita taxes. This resolution must be voted on in December of '24 or January of '25. We are happy to discuss any, this further, and answer any additional questions you may have, and thank you for your time and consideration.
I would open it up for discussion.
How, how much does, does each individual get a year on average?
Exeter, I think it's about $41,000, and takes some change out of that, maybe. And St. Lawrence, about $6,100.
Okay, thank you.
For point of reference, I think Exeter has just a little over 10,000 homes, and I think St. Lawrence has about 800. So we're very drastically different, but...
And it is based on the number of bills collected.
Correct. Great. So I think right now, we're sitting at about 98% collected for the school real estate bills, and per capita goes a little bit further, but right now, we're sitting at about 75% to 80% collected.
So I know there was some, there was some pricing data that administration had supplied us in order to do our own due diligence, just to make sure that, you know, where, where we are competitively with other school districts. And, I mean, from, from the data that, that I see out there, at least currently, is, is we are pretty much in line, or even compensated more than a good number of other districts other than Muhlenberg, which looks like, it looks like it's at $2.10. But, you know, just kind of going down the, the list. Brandywine is a $1.65. Conrad Weiser is $2 with $1 per capita. Exeter, as you mentioned, is $2 for real estate and $2 for per capita. Fleetwood is $1 for real estate. Governor Mithlin is $1.45 and 50 cents for per capita. Hamburgers $1.50. Kutztown is $1.75 for real estate and per capita. Ole is $1.85 for real estate and per capita. Reading is 50 cents per capita. And Schuylkill Valley is $2 for real estate, and Topahawkans is $2 for real estate and $1 for, per capita. Now, I don't know, has there been any movements of any other school districts to increase rates anywhere near $3?
No, the only one I know of right now is Topahawkans. I think they're looking at a quarter to go to two and a quarter.
Okay.
The others haven't released what their, their request was. They're all discussing it this month.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll be candid. I am not a fan of the per capita, and this is nothing against the tax collectors. The, the per capita, we collect, what, $10 for the per capita bill? And, and we're paying $2 for every bill? So a fifth of that, am I correct in saying a fifth of that bill is going to processing?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean...
I'd call it a nuisance tax, but where do you make up the revenue lost?
Well, it would have to go, yeah, it would have to go in the real estate tax, but how much?
Correct.
What would that be?
And, and the reason they, they, a lot of districts went with per capita and that type because it also affects the renters, not just the homeowners, the real estate is strictly property owners.
The landlords, the landlords of the renters are paying that, though.
Well, the actual renters are paying the per capita. The people.
Correct, but I, I mean, with the real estate, if you roll it into the real estate, it's technically the landlord.
I think that was the original intent of per capita. You know, to me, it's a nuisance tax, but, you know, where do we make it up? It's like if we get rid of the activity fee, where do you make up that 60,000 or 70,000? Where do you make up the, the 50,000 or 60,000, you know, the shared per capita, you know, 110?
Yeah, and I hear you, and I, I get what you're saying. I just, you know, we're always saying we're looking at, we're looking to find ways to cut expenses, and we're, and we're looking at things to, you know, every, every year we're at this table, and, and, you know, we're talking about, you know, tax increases, foreseeable tax increases, and, you know, and we, we see the per capita bills, and we're paying, I think you had mentioned, $25,000 in processing, I think was when the last time we talked about this. It is somewhere in that realm, I believe. And, you know, moving or eliminating the per capita and making up whatever that difference would be in the real estate tax just seems like that's money savings to me. That's how I look at it, but that's all I have to say.
How would we go about doing that? Is that just a resolution to remove the per capita?
I believe it would be.
It's actually, it's part of your taxing resolution. If cap is in there, you can put it down to zero, and that would take it out, right?
I defer to...
Right. Yeah. But that's done in June, you're, yeah. For this year, we're talking 25, 26.
This would be 25 and 26 tax year. I mean, is that something the board is interested in having the solicitor look into further?
I am.
Okay. Any objections? Okay. Sounds like Mrs. Montane, if you wouldn't mind...
I'm sorry. I'm going to be, I'm going to be that guy.
Oh, oh, no. Okay, go ahead.
So, so just, just as we, as we talk about that, and we talk about, you know, if you're, if you're adding that tax in, so for example, you know, you take the $10, and we use a $100 real estate bill. Now you're going to, anytime that we pass a resolution, it's not just $100, it's $110. Then it goes to 115, 100, and so on and so forth. So it grows exponent, it grows quicker by not just having the $10 separated. It's the only kind of thing that I see could be a little bit hairy.
Yeah, you're, you're saying the real estate tax bill is going to increase more? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So if you roll it into the real estate taxes, have a real estate tax being $100, and then you're, you're 2% or whatever, so you go to $102. Now, you know, 110 times 2% is more, is more, and so it just, it continues to roll on top of each other. With the per capita tax is $10, and how long has it been $10?
Before I was here.
Yeah, it's been, I think, a long time.
It's probably never increased, and so, you know, that, that's kind of the thing that
we have to be careful with. I understand the point of it, is should we have to be careful of it with our... I understand the point of it, is should we have to be careful of it with our constituents and our taxpayers, that it's gonna be exponentially quicker if you do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, the other option you have is you, which is probably not popular either, but the other option you have is increasing the per capita to a more substantial amount, whatever that would be, $11, so. But, okay, well, I think, I think the board is at least interested in Mrs. Montane looking into it, to figure out what that would be, but...
Not just elimination, but just any adjustment?
Yeah, I would say if, unless anybody objects, we could have Mrs. Montane look into elimination or adjustment to per capita. Okay.
Back to, back to...
Yeah, we kind of derailed here, but any other discussion on the tax compensation?
If we're gonna make a change to the compensation, it has to be done in January, unless you have a meeting before February 15th, that you can vote on it.
Okay.
By law, you have to have, if you're changing compensation, you have to change it before the potential running, I'm not sure, people running for office file their petitions, so they need to know what their compensation will be.
Okay. So, assuming if the board decides not to move forward with any increase in tax compensation, there is no need for a voting item, then, is that, is that correct?
Existing resolutions stays in effect, yeah.
All right, so what I would recommend, then, is doing a roll call, and a simple yes/no, asking...
Straw poll?
Straw, yeah, sorry, not roll call, you've roll called us twice already, I don't need another one of those. Yeah, straw poll, asking yes or no whether the board member is interested in increasing compensation.
Okay, I'm gonna go backwards this time. Allison Wilson?
No.
Julia Schaefer?
No.
Travis Odom?
No.
Timothy Morgan?
No.
Jason Mill?
No.
Ann Herring? Dr. Ann Herring?
No.
John Fidler?
No.
Deborah Bloom?
No.
Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
Nine nos.
Mr. Mel, I do, I just want to recognize Ms. Pierceall, we do certainly appreciate everything that you do, and appreciate you coming here today. I think that a lot of times, when we have to make these decisions and look at them, we have to look at what the county standard is. I think that we're on the high end of that county standard right now. Certainly do appreciate, though, everything that you guys do and represent us, so thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierceall.
That's all from me, Mr. Mel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Facilities and Transportation Committee with Dr. Battler.
I just have a solar update.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just?
I think Mr. Feig needs to go to the restroom, go ahead, take it away, Dr. Battler.
Yeah, right, yeah, it's for discussion, and there's nothing there, so take it away, Mr. Feig.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I think I'm supposed to tell you what we're moving to the voting agenda, so...
Yes, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that'd be great, thank you.
I'm screwing all kinds of things up today. So, we're, under Finance and Audit Committee, we're gonna move A, the Berks County Cybersecurity Consortium, B, the cybersecurity agreement, C has to be voted on, the donation from Casey Towing, D, the St. Lawrence Borough School Tax Reimbursement, I believe we said E is a carryover, correct? We do not need a vote?
E will not need a carryover, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Good.
Sorry, Ms. Battler.
Like I said, I don't have anything there, so it's all good. Take it away, Mr. Feig.
So, the Solar for Schools program, the applications have to be in by January 31st of this month. They limited the amount to 500,000. I think we might qualify for the 500, we definitely qualify for 400,000. There's a point, a scale that they give you points for so many things, we get almost all the points. In fact, we get extra points because there was a coal plant within 15 miles, and it's actually within four miles from the site, that was closed, so that gives you extra points, which is the one that was across the river. The only thing that the board needs to do right now is we have to have a resolution approved to give myself and Kristi Holler, as officials, to execute the documents for the requested grant or loan. So it's basically just a resolution that you're authorizing us to apply for up to 500,000. I have a sample, and I'll give it to Sharon Montane to look at, but I just wanted to, that will be on the January 21st agenda. You know, there's no commitment to do it, but it's a commitment that you allow us to apply for the Solar for Schools. The other thing that we did find out is, the solar projects, they set up a financing authority through the state, so whatever the amount that you get, or the project total is, it's a 0% loan through the state. And so it's completed, then the solar grant pays it off, so. I wish they'd do that with all school projects, and, you know, because they won't come back with a plan con, but if they can set up a financing authority just to do solar programs, why can't they just set up a financing authority for, you know, building projects for schools? So, that's my update, there will be a resolution on the 21st meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's all for me.
Thank you, Dr. Battler.
Absolutely.
I can add one thing. Okay. Money-wise, it looks like between the federal and the rebates, it's zero cost, but we'll have the figures for Finance Committee, so.
All right, moving on, and, so we'll look for that resolution, then, but, at the voting meeting. And Policy Committee with Mrs. Bloom.
We have policies for first reading, policy number 011, principles for governance and leadership, policy 317.1, educator misconduct, policy 803, school calendar, policy 805, emergency preparedness and response, policy 805.1, relations with law enforcement agencies, policy number 805.2, school security personnel, policy 806, child abuse, and policy 807, opening exercises slash moment of silence slash flag displays, and I believe that Mrs. Harris wanted to talk about these.
You got it. So, some routine updates for policies, starting with 317.1, educator misconduct was updated to more broadly reference collaboration with the Title IX Coordinator when the scenario is appropriate. Policy 803, the school calendar policy, was updated, as Dr. Holler referenced earlier, that districts now have the choice between selecting 180 days or selecting hours of instruction to measure their school year, per Act 56 of 2023. Policies 805, 805.1, 805.2, 806 are updated to reflect changes in the school code around language, around references to law enforcement agencies, and in addition to some of the additional training for school security personnel. Policy 807 was updated, based on Act 25 of 2024, to add in the requirement to have a moment of silence on September 11th, as a remembrance for the events of that day. And then, back to the beginning, policy 011, there are no updates to this policy, but the board requested that we look at this at least annually, to be able to reaffirm the board's commitment to the principles of governance and leadership that they are following. So again, this is your existing policy, but this is your opportunity to discuss those principles, if you so wish, and Mr. Mel, I'll turn it over to you for any further discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, I was prepared to speak on this, actually, I'm so glad you passed that over to me. The, yeah, Mrs. Schaefer, as PSBA liaison, you may recall at the last meeting, she did mention about bringing, bringing this to the board for readoption, so my understanding, and Mrs. Schaefer, please interject if I'm wrong, but after the board goes through the first and second readings, and votes back in and adopts, readopts, I should say, the principles, then it, we simply send a notification back to PSBA and let them know it's been read adopted.
That is correct, and then we're added to a list of other schools that have also reaffirmed and adopted our commitment to those principles.
Out of curiosity, if there are no changes, and no discussion, and no recommendations, why do we need to go to a second reading? Why can't we adopt it after a first reading?
Mrs. Harris, could we do that, or, sorry, Mrs. Montane?
Your practice, and I believe it's in one of your policies, of how you adopt policies, says you have two readings.
Even if there's no changes to the policy?
It's best to just follow your...
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Technically, there would be a change, because in board docs, it would reflect that the newest policy date would be that date of adoption, so there's actually technically one change, which is the date.
Very good.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Sorry, is my thing on?
Yeah, it sure is.
It sure is, guess I'm loud. Okay, so, the, well, we all know that. The opening exercises, moment of silence, flag displays, as I was reading that, I, and I appreciate the moment of silence for September 11th, I absolutely do, I wondered, though, why, and I read, I read from the, from the state guidelines, and, you know, et cetera, why don't we do that for, say, December 7th, Pearl Harbor, or any of the other days that we were attacked? I mean, for history, for example, my, I, this is just a quick example, we took, I took my daughter to school today, and my son, and I dropped him off, and both of them asked me why the flag was not up the whole way. Now, one's in eighth grade, one's in 10th grade, and I felt like, I was like, wow, I have not done my job as a parent, right? And I said, well, President Jimmy Carter just passed away, and so the flags at half-staff. I said, that is what we do to, you know, honor somebody on these types of days. And, so that's why, I guess, that's one of the reasons I was just wondering, number one, why we are only doing September 11th, I guess, and then, secondly, is there any type of, like, morning announcements, where they say anything like this anymore? Like, back in, when I was in school, we had morning announcements, and it was like five minutes, maybe, and they explained, like, some of these things, like what was happening in the world, I guess. Do they do that anymore?
I'll take the first part of that question, which is why the September 11th, and that's because it was legislated. So we didn't bring this change as a district, it was part of the legislation, and so it's mandated, and so we had to update the policy to reflect that.
I see, so we haven't looked back that far, or, okay.
Mr. Campbell's here, he can speak from a building principal perspective, but we do do morning announcements with our students, and at times, different principals will make reference to specific historical events, if it's age-appropriate. So there's a different understanding at different, at different levels for our children, but I can have Tom speak to that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll speak for the high school, just to your example, the other day, we did have a moment of silence regarding President Carter, and I had a few words in the morning announcements around that. Do the same thing around some of the other major annual events, D-Day, Veterans Day, so that does occur. There's other times when we have, you know, significant deaths, where the flag is at half-staff, where there'd be a comment in the morning announcements. Certainly, the 9/11 ceremony is much bigger, and Mrs. Harris is correct, that's legislative, so we've been already meeting that, and much more beyond.
Is it like, first thing, morning?
Yes, yes.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding, though, is the reason that this policy kind of singles out or calls out September 11th is because of the legislation that it's referenced in the PA School Code, Section 1555, it's designated just about September 11th and the anniversary.
Specifically about September 11th, correct.
So it's not like we're necessarily excluding other ones, it's just that the policy is trying to adopt to that legislation that's been put into the PA School Code. Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Okay. Any other, I'm sorry?
You're gonna announce moving forward?
Oh, yeah, policy, any, any other policy discussion? Okay, are we okay to move forward with all the policies, as listed? All right.
Item A will move forward.
7A, all right, thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Okay, so, next up is public comments on non-agenda items. We have no one signed up, unless someone would like to come up and speak. Seeing none, we'll move on. We're gonna move the following items to our January voting agenda. It's gonna be meeting minutes, items 4A, C, D, E, and F, 5A, B, C, and D, and 7A. And are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Mel, I have a couple things.
I have a brief item.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. A story in the New York Times caught my attention today, under the headline, "What if ICE agents show up? Schools prepare teachers and parents," and it deals largely with the larger school systems in the country, New York, Chicago, and LA, and how they are planning to welcome immigration agents if they show up on the doorstep of schools. And I bring it to the board's and the administration's attention, not with any recommendations, but I was just curious to know if we have looked at this, and are we developing plans to, for that possibility?
Dr. Holler is shaking her head no.
No, we don't, we don't have anything solid yet to even go on, so, once we receive information about this, on what has passed, and what we must do, or what we must comply with, then we'll take a look at it, but until that time, you know, it would just be conjecture on our part as to how to proceed, and, and so, we're not going to be doing that until further notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I had a couple things. First of all, I again wanted to acknowledge Mr. Mohawad and Mr. Pio, thanks for coming out tonight. I think it's important, as the township liaison, that we continue to have a relationship. We serve the same constituents, certainly appreciate you guys being here, and looking forward to continuing our relationship. I also see that Larry's in the back from the township, also wanted to give him a thank you. This is not an easy time of year for him, not that any time of year is easy, but certainly appreciate you and your crew's efforts, trying to keep our roads safe for our students and our faculty and our staff that come in. And I also wanted to just say something to Dr. Holler, you know, for the public listening, these are not easy decisions that Dr. Holler has to make, I know that there's no one that hates the S-word more than she does. Snow, Jason, thank you.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
I would just remind everyone to have some grace, these decisions have to be made with everyone's safety in mind, when we talk about safety and security, safety is part of that, and making sure our buses can get in and out. If anybody drove around yesterday at 8:00 in the morning, they would know how absolutely slippery it was, and I guess the final reminder is to remind everyone, as they're driving through the township, that the township does not own every road in the township, so. And what I noticed was that the roads that they did own looked very, very good, so just wanted to say thank you.
Can I just, I just want to thank you, Mr. Morgan, for making that remark, and I also like to thank the township for their support. We start talking to the township and the police throughout the evening into the early morning hours. I believe our Director of Transportation, Kai, was on the phone with Larry this morning around 4:00, because I got the text at 4:20, about if we were doing a two-hour delay, and what the roads, what the roads look like. It is never an easy decision, and sometimes I'm gonna get it right, and sometimes I'm gonna get it wrong, and I'm not gonna apologize for that, because we do have employees that start coming in here at like 5:00 in the morning, and I... start coming in here at like five in the morning, and I don't think people realize that, that's what time some of our custodians are coming in, that's what time some of our food services are coming in. So, it's not just our bus drivers, because they're preparing for the day, it's not just the students that are starting to head out on the road to get on buses at a certain time, it's much more than that. And if something happens to an employee, to a student, whether it's on a bus, or one of our students who drive, to... ...that decision. So, I'm always gonna err on the side of caution, and like I said, last, yesterday, I got it right, all the county schools were off, we all made the call early, because parents also need to know what's, you know, they're doing for daycare, and sometimes I'm gonna get it wrong, so, but I will always make the decision based on keeping our community safe, so thank you.
So, we heard that Dr. Holler said she will always be right?
Yes.
And never be wrong.
That's right.
Any other board members? Okay, I, one quick comment for myself, I will just, I would ask that the community, when there are things that need to be brought to the school district's attention, or things that you disagree with or agree with, the best course of action is to contact somebody at the school, whether that's a teacher, an administrator, the school board. Venting on Facebook is probably maybe good for your own mental health, maybe not, but I think in all things considered, to get the most, or the proper action, and to get that feedback actually to the proper people here in the district, it would be great for the community to actually reach out to us directly and have that conversation, so I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to say that, I know social media is a fun place to be on, especially, especially during snowstorms and calendar changes, but that's all I have. All right, excuse me, sorry. If nothing else, our next meeting will be our voting meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-first at seven PM. There will be an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss safety and security, in addition to personnel related to the Act Ninety-three contract renewal. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting.